If you want to get going with the pledge of allegiance, it's a minute or so after six.
I have a way to sum it up.
Let's do it.
The people who stood to defy the United States of America and to rely on which they stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on the Mench Open Development Area. Second, thanks, Ed. For those who don't know, this is a matter of application to the planning board. Correct me if I say anything wrong here. For a lot line, for a lot line adjustment, but since it's an ODA, it has to come through us. So we've received referrals from the county planning as well as the planning board. And I think we're at the point, if there are no more public comment, which we're open to, that we can take a vote on it. Warren, is that?
Yeah, is anybody here for the?
I'm here for the. Obviously, Andrew Lessig. Hello there. Andrew Lessig, I'm with Victoria Paladoro's office and one of her associate attorneys here in the village of Ryanbeck. We are representing Mr. Mench and really the whole Mench family on this. Obviously, I know you've already had a presentation by a past meeting, so if there are further questions, obviously, that arise right now in your discussions or from anybody in public who speaks, I could speak to it, but I don't want to take up any of your time.
Warren, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, so basically, this is a, you could say. It's our understanding there's a lot line adjustment application before the planning board for the Mench property located on Mill Road. They're not creating any new lots. They're adjusting the lots among three lots, lot number one, two, and three that are identified in the resolution. But the access to those three lots will be through a easement or right-of-way known as Daz Lane, which will then connect to Mill Road. And under Section 2 ADA of the town law, that requires an open development approval by the town board to approve any access that doesn't have direct access to a town road. So we opened the public hearing, I think, two months ago, two meetings ago. There were no comments, I believe, no adverse comments. So we're in a, let's say, type-two action under Seeker. So I prepared a resolution approving the open development area tonight for the town board to approve with a few conditions. One, that the approval of the applicant received the approval of the highway superintendent for the common driveway in accordance with any applicable provisions of the town highway specifications. Any further use, extension, or amendment of the open development area shall require further application to the town board for further ODA approval. Like to see a proof of recording of an easement maintenance agreement over Daz Lane for the driveway, which I believe is within a 50-foot right-of-way, will be paved for 11 feet in width. And that's submitted to me. I will approve it if it's in proper form. And then subject to any other conditions that the planning board imposes on the lot line adjustment. So all of that is contained in the resolution. Doesn't have to be read. It's just made part of the record, and if you want to vote on it, that's fine.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter? Thanks. Second, great. I guess we're down for the vote on this one. Any questions, comments, anything else? All right. How do you all vote?
Upstone has to make a motion.
Oh, motion to vote, sorry.
Second.
Second, okay. And we vote? All right, great. It's my first one of those, so.
You did a good job.
I'm going to jump around a little bit in order to get Warren out of here. Ruben will lead you in a moment. I'm going to jump to the tab 11. Resolution 2023-1. Oh, no, apologies. Tab four.
I'm sorry, what?
Tab four, 2023-168, transfer of Ryancliff Footbridge from town to Amtrak. So just as a little background on this for the public, we've been working on trying to get Amtrak to take the pedestrian bridge back as its part of the infrastructure. We've been maintaining it for years. So that's a process of basically selling it down for $10 for them to get the deed back, right? So we've been going back and forth for a while. Warren's been helping us on this, and it's sort of a coup for us because we've been maintaining this thing for years and we don't want to anymore. So we're at the finish line on this part. And is there anything else, Warren, that needs to be added?
Yeah, basically, we have been negotiating with Amtrak to take over the footbridge over the railroad right-of-way. It's the southern, that would be the southern bridge. It's become a burden for the town to maintain that. And we've reached an agreement with the, with Amtrak that they will, in fact, take over ownership of that, of that bridge. We're going to eat it to them by quick claim deed. And all of that is contained in the resolutions. They're paying $10 consideration for that. And upon transfer, Amtrak is going to assume all obligations and responsibilities in the future for the care, maintenance, improvement, construction, reconstruction of the passenger bridge in perpetuity, and will assume all responsibility for the cost of maintenance and operation of the bridge and hold the town harmless for any legal action that's brought against the town as a result of Amtrak's maintenance of that bridge, and they will keep it for a insurance policy. This, this agreement that you have attached to the resolution has, in fact, been negotiated with Amtrak's legal counsel. The only issue that we have were some minor issues with regard to the substance of the quick claim deed and whether we need an actual survey of the underlying footprint of the bridge. We have determined through our title company that they don't require that to be filed. I'm just waiting for final approval from Amtrak indicating that they're, that they are not going to require a survey, which will take several months and cost the town a considerable amount of money. So I think we're in a position to approve the agreement in its present form. We will work out any issues that arise with regard to title and survey if that arises. And it is subject to a permissive referendum. So, and that's printed in the, in the resolution and is referred to in the agreement. So all we need to do tonight is to vote on the resolution, which I have approved in the agreement in the same or substantially similar form. There may be some tweaks to the agreement, but we don't expect there'll be anything of substance.
Okay. I never motioned this to the floor, did I? All right, I have a motion. Make a motion.
Second.
Great, thanks. Any questions, comments, public feedback, anything? Yes, please. Just give us your name and last name.
Sorry, Kara Keywell, Appleton Road, Ryanbeck. I wasn't aware of this, so hopefully this is an easy question. Do we maintain control over the aesthetics of the footbridge?
Once we transfer that to Amtrak, then Amtrak will be the owner of the bridge. And whatever they decide to do with the bridge in terms of maintaining it or changing it or modifying it, that's up to Amtrak. We don't maintain control over that. That's one of the trade-offs of relieving the town of responsibility for the bridge.
I would just raise that as a minor concern, given all the other efforts going on to keep things, especially in that historic waterfront, Ryancliff, Hamlet.
I mean, all the work that's going on down there is basically out of our jurisdiction. So I understand the concern. At the same point, we have, they've been gracious in keeping us in the loop, and they seem to, I can't remember the name of the architecture firm, but they hired someone of note. So they seem to have sensitivities towards all of these things, but we don't have control.
Right, and when they put that sign up?
It's at Elizabeth's house. We had it moved to her house.
They asked them to take it down, and they did. So they've been cooperating. Yeah, but unfortunately, we can't convey it to Amtrak and relieve ourselves of responsibility for the bridge and still maintain control.
They took both sides of the house.
Amtrak will do right by the bridge and by the municipality, but I can't guarantee what plans they have for.
Thank you for answering the question.
Okay, anything else? Can I get a roll call?
I need a roll call vote on.
This one's a roll call? Okay. Councilperson Roberts.
Aye.
Councilperson.
Aye.
Councilperson Shea.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's four. Jones got that, great. So I'm going to jump ahead again to age discussion items. We have a petition and a request to increase funding for the Star Library of roughly $70,000. Received a petition, a petition and a memo, which means that this will go to vote, and we're essentially approving that because we have to approve that.
Yeah, which tab is that?
That's a good question. That is tab 15.
15?
Yeah. And that's essentially the memo. Joan has the actual petition itself and the original signatures. And for everybody's edification before we get to questions and comments, this would roughly mean $70,000 would roughly be 3 cents per thousand additional on your property taxes. Don't quote me on it, but that's just the rough number on it. So this will go to vote. We'll all vote on it. If it says yes, then it's, this $70,000 more means about 4 cents per thousand, per 100,000 of property value.
So just to let you understand what's happening, the only part that we play in this is that the petition, we received a petition in accordance with Section 259 1B of the education law. The petition has to be signed by, I believe, a 10, I think it's 10%. Where is Joan?
In the back.
10% of the, of the citizens who voted on the last gubernatorial election. We have the petition. Joan is, I'm hoping, reviewing the petition to make sure that the signatures are correct, that the petition has been properly notarized, and that they have the requisite number of signatures to the petition. The one thing we don't have, I don't have a resolution of the board of directors of the library. I have to have that. So you better notify them that they have to comply with the requirements of the education law and provide that to us. If by the next meeting we have confirmed that the petition is in proper form and that we do, in fact, receive the resolution of the library board of trustees, then I will prepare the necessary documentation that Joan will, the board will then vote upon and certify it to be placed on our ballot for the November election.
Okay, great, thank you. So in theory, resolution, next, next meeting?
Next meeting, I'll have that for you.
Alan, you got it?
So it's not 4 cents per thousand, it's 4 cents per 100,000.
4 cents per 100,000.
So if you have like a million-dollar house, we're talking a 40-cent increase in your property tax.
And that's, that's not the full amount in the budget, that's the increase.
That's just the net increase, yeah. Because as of right now, 2023 budget, the mill rate is .191. So that would go up, and that's based on their $350,000, excuse me, $394,000 budget.
Initially placed, there'll be a proposition on, on the ballot, and the citizens of the, voting citizens of the town of Ryanbeck will have the opportunity to approve or not approve the increase in the budget.
Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Questions, comments, concerns? We need our library.
Is anybody here from the library? To the library. It might be nice if a representative of the library appeared at the next meeting when he passed the resolution, maybe to modify the, since we're doing this.
It's not a bad idea. Warren, that, those are the three items that I think were submitted to your.
I think that's it. Children, is there anything else you need me for?
Yes, I have all for you.
Okay.
So I think then I'd like to finish discussion items, tab 16, CAB discussion initiatives. Ruben, you got the floor?
Oh, I'm going to stay with this.
Good evening, my name is Ruben DePauver. I do prepare written notes here just so that I'll state this point. Five minutes, I think. I was on the Citizens Comprehensive Plan Review Committee and am presently on the town's Conservation Advisory Board. The two other members of the Scenic Roads Subcommittee, Kara Keywell and Steve Schwartz, are here this evening. After eight months of research and meetings, the review committee made a series of recommendations.
You can get a little closer to the mic, I'm having a little trouble.
Is it on? Is the mic on?
I'll get closer. Now you're just before him. After eight months of research and meetings, the review committee made a series of recommendations presented to this board at its January 3 meeting. I am here to ask the board to take the next step for implementing three of the initiatives derived from those recommendations, that the committee believe will best equip the community to uphold the intention of the plan to preserve Ryanbeck's vitality and rural character. The three initiatives are developing a map and designation process for scenic roads, creating an open space plan, and completing a cultural resources inventory. These initiatives will provide essential strategic planning tools in enabling the town to face upcoming challenges and opportunities. First, scenic roads. The 2009 comprehensive plan recommended that all Class A scenic roads, scenic fushes and stark landscapes, and the stark roads be designated as critical environmental areas. A reference map including all of the designated scenic roads needs to be developed and referenced back to the current zoning regulations. And a process for future adding to or removing from the list needs to be adopted. This will help inform the town board and the planning board as they consider future land use and development proposals. Secondly, the town needs an open space plan. The town, along with the village, just completed a natural resources inventory, which is here, just completed a few months ago, and it's, I actually read it, and it's a very, very good document for the, for the town and particularly for the conservation board in its review of projects. The natural resources inventory addresses such matters as habitat resilience, solar development, suitability, drinking water catchment, and land use, and identifies sensitive biodiversity areas and scenic resources. An open space plan is a crucial next step for the town to leverage the information generated by the natural resources inventory by identifying and prioritizing future efforts the town can take, such as protected wildlife corridors and forest areas, locating and developing additional recreational facilities, including bikeways, and identifying appropriate locations for denser housing development and economic growth. It is an indispensable strategic planning tool in the face of challenges such as landscape fragmentation caused by rural and suburban sprawl, climate change, and population growth. Thirdly, similar to the natural resources inventory, the cultural resources inventory will identify all of the historic and institutional assets of the town. Much of this work has already been completed by the town's historian and others. It just needs to be culminated and officially adopted document for reference. The town planner, under its current contract with the town, can prepare scenic roads map and process as well as preparation, as well as a presentation and scope of work for how the town could create an open space plan and cultural resources inventory. This is a request for the town board to authorize the town planner to proceed. This will enable the town board to make informed decisions about these initiatives. Cornell Cooperative Extension and the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development offer free technical services and grant funding to help support such initiatives, and the CAB will provide input. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring these important next steps to the towns, in the town's environmental planning process, to you and for your consideration, and I'm ready to help in any way I can. I'd like to mention also that Vanessa Portozzi, village trustee, and Savin Zerola, who initially chaired the citizens review committee, and so many other important initiatives of the town over the years, would have liked to have been here to support this, these initiatives. And there are maybe others here from the community, volunteers who have interest in these as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruben. Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions, and mostly based on trying to get your knowledge, because I know that you've been working on this for a long time. Of the three, I mean, and I'm not trying to be reductionist, some people, of the three, is there one that's more important than the other, or is there a triage within that? And my question for that really relates to the fact that on the, on the cultural resource end of it, like what's, could that be a bolstering of HAPAC? You know, where's the gaps from HAPAC scope that would be filled in from the cultural resource inventory? So I guess I'm looking at it from a different way in that, what are the missing pieces from the setup we have now that these things fill?
I'll try to.
In your opinion?
Sure, so these being all three initiatives?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So as far as the, the easiest one is the cultural resources inventories. So it would be creating a document, something like this.
Yep.
However, I will say that the vast majority of the groundwork has been done. I've been to the library room where all the historic resources are and so on, but there is no reference document on it. So I think that that would be a very helpful tool for the town also to be able to say, okay, well, these are the, these are the properties that we've identified and the resources we've identified that we want to address in certain ways as development projects come up. As far as the other two, I just want to make really clear that we're not asking you to approve going forward with an open space plan at this point. We're just asking that a detailed presentation be prepared by the town planner so that you and the community can understand what, what that really means in depth, because it is, it's no small undertaking. I would not say it's as involved as doing a comprehensive plan again, but it does involve community input, and it's an effort, and it's, it's an exciting one. We're just asking that the town planner be able to put together, let's call it a scope of work, so that a budget can be prepared and detailed so you can understand better what it would entail.
Okay.
And lastly, if I may, the roads mapping piece is really just kind of circling the loop here.
Yeah.
In the comprehensive plan, there is a, a map of some of the scenic roads, but not all of the ones that are mentioned, and it would be an important tool for the planning board and the conservation board to have completed.
Cool, thank you. Yes, I mean, we have to consider any expenses, obviously, in the fall when the budget cycle comes up, as I'm sure you're aware, but I think it makes perfect sense to get in the weeds a little bit on this. I personally just would like to understand, I will spend time, it's been me later, also Triple or whoever in the planning board, to see how this stuff is deployed in the process. That's the thing that's kind of missing from me, since it's our profession, right? What exactly, how, because the NRI maps, I understand how those are used. I just don't understand how these pieces, so another time, I'll get some time from you. Anybody else? Anything else, anybody?
Warren, do you have anything to add? I don't have anything to add. I mean, this has to be discussed internally, and we do have some preliminary estimates of cost, talking about a very significant cost to, to implement all four plans. Some of it, the town board may decide to go ahead with, but we have been discussing this with our planner, and we'll be considering it further with our planner, giving it our attention and decide how to move forward with your suggestion.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned historic assets. I didn't quite catch the full context, but it causes me to ask, has there been any coordination or discussion with the historic preservation committee that we refer to as HAPAC? For those of you who aren't sure what HAPAC is.
Yeah, well, certainly, disrespectful, I've talked to Kathy Hammer and also Nancy Kelly, and also Mr. Fraser, is it? At the, the resource area of the library. So I've seen a lot of the documentation that's available, and it is extensive, but again, it's really not in a form that can be easily used at this point.
The other person you talked with at the library, Michael Fraser?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Yeah, of course.
I had the pleasure of working with Ruben and Steve on the, on the, particularly on the scenic roads.
Closer to the mic, please.
Worked with Ruben and Steve on the, on the citizens advisory committee, and I just wanted to point out that the whole point of that review was to look at comprehensive plans through the lens of sustainability. So where we have the NRI, which is really important from an environmental standpoint, the cultural resources inventory would add the social aspect to that and enable us to mesh the two. And I would argue that, that even though it is called a cultural resource inventory, it's not limited to things that are old.
Got it.
So, you know, we're taking a look at where people in the community gather, where events happen, where we'd like them to happen, and how people use the roads and things like that, as well as respecting the history, past history of the town.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else? Hearing nothing. Warren, thank you for your time. I think we're going to return to our regular scheduled meeting, basically, which brings us back to announcements committees and liaison reports.
We'll wait for the approval of the permits.
Oh, good point. See you, Warren. I got Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll approve.
That's the next one, isn't it? Thank you, thank you. Second, thank you. No comments, concerns, anything? Last minutes? Let's say aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, so jumping back down to the announcements committee, committee liaison reports. Any committee liaison reports? Any announcements? Alan, good?
Good.
So two brief things. Liz Irwin Memorial Tree Celebration, July 11th, 6 p.m., rec. work. I didn't know Liz, but with, given the story of her critical role in forming the camps and the pool and all that stuff down at the park, so go out on the 11th and celebrate Liz. Early voting in town hall, believe it or not, we've got another vote coming up in the fall. Early voting starts June 17th for hours. Refer to the Board of Education. Do we offer any?
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, Jesus. I don't know any other B O E's acronyms, so I got both of them. Do we have any information? That stuff shows up on our website, doesn't it?
Yeah, on their website.
On their website, okay. Go to their website, not our website. Resolutions F. They have a motion for 2023-146 procurement policy.
Make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Second. Any conversation, discussions, anything? Just for the public, this is an update of our procurement policies and procedures in coordination with our labor consultant, Michael Richardson, and I think it's mostly to do with highs and lows and when you have to get three bids and things like that, but it's an update to bring us into the 21st century procurement policy. Any comments, questions? Revote?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion for 2023-150 field turf maintenance?
Motion.
Now a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chauncey. This is from last meeting. We're trying to figure out what exactly is the right amount, the Goldilocks question of field turf maintenance, and we decided that it's two. We're going to go with number two, which is basically them coming twice a year, and then we'll assess from there if that's enough or too much, but we didn't want to overengage ourselves with field turf. Any questions, comments? May I have a motion, or may I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. May I have a motion for tab five, 2023-169-40 pool passes?
Motion.
Now a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. This essentially extends pool passes to all employees. Any questions, comments? Any questions, comments, concerns?
We've just been doing this for years.
No, I know.
Yeah, so.
Great. Vote, what is the vote?
Aye.
Aye. I forget how Elizabeth does that.
All in favor.
All in favor, that's what she does, thank you. It's so elegant. Okay, moving ahead to, may I get a motion for twenty twenty-three, one seventy, hire cemetery groundskeeper?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
So I believe this gets us what we need?
Well, that and number eight.
Yeah. Okay, good. So essentially, we are, and this one and the next, when we get down to it, trying to get the cemetery the help it needs.
Yes.
And thank you for your contributions. I called, I was going to say, just today to make sure that we were, so anyway. Questions, comments, concerns? Nothing? Let's say?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously, not coming back to, okay. Tab seven, twenty twenty-three, one seventy, replace expired firewall hardware cemetery highway department recreation park. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
The hardware we have for the, those three remote areas is now obsolete, no longer supported, we have to replace.
Okay, great. I want to be in the PC repair business. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved. Tab eight, twenty twenty-three, one seventy-two, hire part-time seasonal maintenance department labor, this is the second one to solve the cemetery problem, may I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, anything? So this is our second labor.
No, 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 that's not for cemetery.
It's not?
No.
Oh, maintenance department labor? Twenty twenty-three, one seventy-two, hire part-time seasonal maintenance department labor.
That's not.
Yes, that's not our cemetery problem, apologies. Uh, this is for the maintenance department summer labor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
The next one is?
Advertising.
May I get a motion for twenty twenty-three, one seventy-three, advertise full-time cemetery groundskeeper, town hall cleaner?
I'll make a motion.
For a second. So this is the second motion to fix the problem where we are advertising for full-time cemetery groundskeeper and town hall cleaner, which we believe we need because of the amount of work that has to happen at our cemetery. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Not, so moved. Uh, tab ten, twenty twenty-three, one seventy-four, make a motion for summer recreation hires.
Motion.
Second. Thank you, Ed. I believe this is the end or close to the end of our summer recreation hires.
Well, I have three more to add to the list, there's an amendment.
Okay.
So.
Do you, I need to make a motion for an amendment? From the floor, may I make?
I made the motion.
Okay, a second.
And now we're gonna, I move that we amend the, there, I have three names on here, one is a counselor, another is a lifeguard, and the third one is a recreation assistant with, with salaries in the same range as we had before, so.
All right, I'll second, I'll second that change. So now we need to vote on putting that change in the record, correct? May I get a vote on the amendments on hand?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns about this? Summer recreation hires. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
Joan, I'll give you the names and salaries and so forth.
Okay, that, that, that. We voted on tab eleven, motion for the open, for the mensch, that's done, right?
Yes.
Great. Twenty twenty-three, one seventy-six, tab twelve, make a motion for preliminary accounts payable abstracts.
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved. Tab thirteen, twenty twenty-three, one seventy-seven, make a motion for capital abstract, project, project abstract, excuse me.
Motion.
And a second?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chauncey. Um, any concerns, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved. Uh, tab fourteen, twenty twenty-three, one seventy, budget transfers and amendments, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. Any comments, questions, concerns about the transfers and amendments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved. So that's it for resolutions. New business, anyone have any new business? We're gonna have to put garbage cans down at the, at the new soccer field. That's my new business for the week. The garbage was overflowing this weekend.
By all means.
Hearing none, moving to public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody ready from the public? Rudy?
Yeah, my name is Ruben McIntyre. Wanted to come down and ask Ed and Alan if there's been any update on the noise of this.
We discussed this a little bit today, and we're thinking in terms of, we can't do the audible thing, there's no way to regulate.
I'm sorry, you, you speak a little closer.
There's no way to regulate the, the decibels, you can't enforce that, so we're looking at hours and times of week when these things can be used right now. That's where we are.
You're looking at hours?
Hours of time, literally, hours. And not totally all the time.
Okay.
All right?
So it could emit a certain amount of noise for a certain amount of hours past that?
That's it.
That would be enforceable?
That's right. Right now.
Okay. So what did Warren say? What did Warren come back with on the previous draft that we had come up with?
I don't recall, actually. I'm sure he asked him when he was here. I mean, the problem with the D B meter approach, where you measure the sound level, is that the police department isn't there, and so you have all the problems of signing an affidavit or proving that the noise level was above the allowed limit, number one. Number two is, there's a fair amount of inaccuracy in a lot of those meters anyway. So I think the hour, the idea would be to allow people to operate these things during certain hours, and that's a lot easier to deal with. If somebody is blowing leaves at six a.m., ridiculous time, I mean, that's something you're going to enforce, because there's no question about whether they're running the thing at six a.m. or not, as opposed to trying to figure out how loud it is. But that's the direction we're going in, and we gotta talk to the police department and the village and so on to make sure we're all together on this.
Okay, so what's the next step?
I guess we should meet. Yeah, we're, I've been talking, well, we've been talking to Vanessa, and I would say we're probably a few weeks away from having something specific. Just a question of getting with Warren and writing down some rules. By the way, any input you have on hours that would work would be, would be welcome.
Well, you're proposing a number, a number of hours, or are you saying certain hours?
Certain hours. Yeah, just certain.
So if my neighbor wanted to go off for six hours from ten a.m. until, until?
Four.
Four p.m., that's okay?
If those were the hours, yes, that would be okay.
That's fine, no issues with somebody running a leaf blower for six hours a day?
Well, if they still have their hearing at the end, yeah. I, I don't, I don't know any other way to do it.
Other cities have done this, so why don't we copy what other cities?
The problem is enforcement. I mean, you can pass lots of laws, the question is how do you enforce them? And I, I, with you, I wanted to do the thing based on noise levels.
No, that's not my solution.
Well, okay, that was my solution.
Not mine.
I mean, I have a D B meter on my watch, for goodness sake, and, you know, I, but we didn't get anywhere with that. The, the police department thing is unenforceable and the.
That's not what Sergeant Dunn told me. He said it's enforceable, and every time I've called the police department, they've showed up.
Okay. Well, why don't they enforce the laws we have now?
Because as we've discussed a hundred times in email, probably two hundred times by now, it's not enforceable. The current ordinance cannot be enforced, so we need an ordinance that is enforceable before this can go anywhere.
Okay, that I wasn't aware of.
You weren't aware that?
The current.
Okay, we have literally emailed back and forth a hundred times.
I understand, well, I haven't, okay.
But the current ordinance is not enforceable. The current ordinance says seventy decibels at ten feet, which is not enforceable, that says, um, somebody with a manual rake is probably breaking that ordinance, it's just a poorly, poorly written ordinance, and it needs to be similar to another city's that is enforceable, so why don't we just copy another city?
Yeah. Seventy D B at ten feet is enforceable, the problem is it's unreasonable.
No, it's not, I mean, right, that would mean every piece of electric equipment, every gas, it's all illegal at that point, so for practical purposes, it's really not enforceable.
Well, we, okay. We should talk offline.
But every time I've emailed you two, you've ignored it.
Okay.
So, so when should we talk? I'm all for talking, when should we make that happen?
I tell you, I'll, I'll give you my phone number, why don't we talk on the phone? Does that work for you?
Great.
Got a question?
I'll call you tomorrow.
Yeah? You got my number?